So is this, this is regular meetings, is this, is this, is this a special meeting?
This is special meeting.
It's, it's very special.
Very special. All the special people are here. What are you saying about Jordan? She's the most special of all. I'm surprised she's one of everything.
Okay, I'll call to order the, this March tenth, special meeting of planning and zoning commission. Um, this meeting is held in person as well via Zoom. There's a dial in number one, seven, one, nine, three, five, nine, forty-five, eighty. Do the roll call.
Commissioner Connerton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Guyman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cipperly?
Yeah.
Chair Waller?
Here.
Commissioner Cowan?
Here.
Commissioner Houghton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Any conflicts of interest? For tonight? Okay. Comments from citizens appearing for items not on the agenda? See none out there, doesn't look like any are online. New items. Okay, Watkins?
Thank you Chair Waller, thank all of y'all for coming tonight to this special meeting. Not used to seeing y'all on a Monday night. I am just, I have a little presentation, I'm going to try to share if I can get Zoom to work and we'll begin. Okay, so tonight we're gonna be talking about some potential code changes. Uh, regarding duplexes and triplexes. And we have some recommendations for potential changes to where we allow duplexes and triplexes in the city. As a reminder, uh, as a, a code change, this city council makes these decisions, so y'all will be making a recommendation to city council tonight. And while this is, um, a new item, it builds on a lot of previous work that we've done over the last couple of years in the city. Uh, beginning with a strategic housing plan update, which is a planning document that's, I'm gonna talk about a little bit. And it had its own, uh, kind of process and public outreach process, uh, before we adopted it. So that was back in twenty twenty-three, um, involving a lot of the year of twenty twenty-three. And then, beginning that same year, um, coming out of some of the recommendations of that plan. We started talking, um, with you all and the city council and with the community about making some changes to the zoning code to meet those recommendations. Um, so I won't read all of these, uh, bullet pointed events that happened. Um, just know that we did do, there's a large body of work that backs this up. Um, although we haven't really had conversations about this topic since May of last year. Um, so we adopted the strategic housing plan update in July of twenty twenty-three. And the recommendation that I have on the screen for you says to update the zoning code to enable up to three units on lots currently zoned for single unit housing. Requiring deed restrictions for additional units. So, what I've shown here is, uh, a screenshot of our table of allowed uses in the zoning use chart. This is one of the most important parts of the zoning code. This is the, the chart, and this is obviously just a small portion of it that shows what is allowed where. So, this portion, we're looking at, uh, different kinds of residential uses such as multifamily, townhouses, single family detached homes. Two-family dwellings, also known as duplexes. When we talk about triplexes, which is one of the subjects of tonight, that fits right now into the multifamily category. And as we see here. We are recommending creating a new category just for triplexes. So it will, um, in a lot of its, with the requirements that go with it, it'll act a lot like multifamily still, but we're calling it out separately. So that's one of the changes here. And the, what we're really talking about with this proposal tonight is allowing. Triplexes, three-family homes, uh, in the RM one zone where it's currently not allowed, allowing it by a special administrative review. Um, so this is a new kind of review that we're creating. And, um, we're proposing allowing triplexes in RM one, this use, when one of the triplexes is deed restricted for resident occupancy. We're proposing allowing duplexes in the RR zone with this administrative review where duplexes are not currently allowed. We are proposing allowing duplexes in the RL zone, um, where they are allowed right now by special use permit. But we're proposing it, uh, be allowed by administrative review or by special use permit, and I'm gonna go into those details. And then again, in the RM one zone, allowing duplexes by administrative review or by special use permit. So, when we say one or the other, um. We mean that, uh, we're proposing some buffers. And let me take another step back, I think, to give you guys some history. Um, we were directed by city council last month to bring this topic back of duplexes and triplexes. Um, city council was interested in putting some caps on how many there could be to kind of alleviate some of the concerns we've heard in the past about neighborhoods changing too fast, about too much density and. Other associated issues with that. Um, on some research and advice from legal that we, that we received, we can't really do caps that way. So, uh, our intention tonight, and with the recommendation here, is to, um, kind of follow that direction. Um, of, of being, of, of limiting how many there can be and of kind of limiting the, the pace of change in our neighborhoods. Um, and our solution that we've come up with for that is using buffers, similar to how we do vacation rentals right now. If you recall, vacation rentals can't be within two hundred and fifty feet of, of one another. And so, that's a, a, the most important limiting factor in, in vacation rentals and how many there can be in Glenwood. So something similar for duplexes and triplexes, we're proposing a three hundred and fifty foot buffer between each of these duplexes that are, uh, approved with this administrative review. And we have, um, we drafted this to have two different buffers, um, based on the zone districts. So RR and RL, um, RR stands for, um, rural residential and RRRL, excuse me, stands for, uh, rural low density. So as the names imply, these are our kind of lowest density zone districts. There's very little land in the city that has these own districts at all. Um, they're kind of meant to be transitional from low density stuff out in the county to the city. Um, and because it's kind of low density in these areas already, we're proposing three hundred and fifty foot buffers in between these duplexes. But, and here's the little detail, uh, there's gonna be a lot of details that are important tonight. In RL, if you recall, um, duplexes are allowed by special use right now. So, we are proposing that they be allowed by administrative review with these three hundred and fifty foot buffers. But, within that buffer, um, they could still be allowed if approved by you all, B and Z, by special use permits. I'm trying to make that clear how it works with our current regulations. And we're proposing no changes to parking requirements, um, anywhere tonight. So not for the duplexes, not for the triplexes, not for any of these zone districts. Um, in addition to the buffer requirements, we're recommending, um, as part of the administrative review, that they meet a few criteria that are kind of based on our special use review already. Um, just kind of general, uh, compliance with the code and comprehensive plan. So we've just talked about RR and RL. We're gonna move on to RM one now. We're recommending an RM one that we allow duplexes and triplexes by this new administrative review. Uh, instead of a three hundred and fifty foot buffer, we're recommending a two hundred and fifty foot buffer. And, to be clear, this is one of those little details. The way we've drafted this tonight is that a duplex approved by administrative review could be next to a triplex that's approved by administrative review. So they'll have their own, their individual buffers. Um, I'm just gonna skip ahead just for a second. So here's an example, two hundred and fifty foot buffer that we drew. The idea that these two have their own separate buffers, maybe you could think of them as having different colors. So instead of this green buffer that you see, there'd be a, what's your favorite color? A yellow buffer for the triplexes. Um, and of the triplexes, one unit will have to be deed restricted for resident occupancy. That means that, that residence, uh, that the person who resides in that, that unit has to be part of our local workforce. Or meet one of a small number of exemptions. That means it can still, um, when it's for sale or when it's for rent, it could be for sale or for rent at any price. But the person who lives there has to be part of our local workforce. And we're recommending the same criteria, that consistency with our municipal code and with our adopted plans. So, again, as I said before, RR and RL, there's very little of that land in the city. Specifically, there are sixteen parcels and, and forty-one, uh, sixteen, uh, RR lots and forty-one RL lots. I'll show you a map in a second, so you can kind of see where those are located. And I think when you see where they're located also, you'll see that they're really not very much of a development redevelopment factor here. RM one, on the other hand, is different. We have, uh, a fair amount of the city that's owned RM one. Um, nine hundred and eighty-eight lots, and of lots that are seventy-five hundred square feet, there are seven hundred and eight of those. The seventy-five hundred square feet matters because that is the minimum size lot in which you could have, um, a duplex or a triplex. So why are we proposing to make these changes? This is a method of growth that, uh, is in infill development, and we could talk for a while about what infill development means and. The advantages, disadvantages of that. Infill basically just means that it's taking place in established neighborhoods, you know, within city boundaries, as opposed to. Moving outside the city and, and green land, greenfield development, taking what used to be agricultural land and developing it for residential. Um, there are a lot of benefits to infill development, including the fact that it's already served by all kinds of services. They already have sidewalks, usually, there's streets going to them, water and sewer services, there are already parks, hopefully within, um, nearby distance. There, the neighborhood impacts to, um, this kind of development, this kind of small scale infill, infill development. Uh, obviously include construction and parking or construction vehicles. That would be true no matter where it is, but because they're located in established neighborhoods, people tend to feel those, those impacts more. And people can also feel the impact of these kind of changes because, um, sometimes it feels like it's their neighborhoods changing, the characters changing a little bit. That's something that we're mitigating, we think, with the, uh, buffer requirements. This is also, as a method of growth, uh, this doesn't cost the city anything. It's all borne by the cost of developers and homeowners who choose to redevelop. It implements some of the recommendations from the plan update that I shared before and more also from the comprehensive plan that I'm gonna get to. These are also, um, smaller developments that in contrast to some of the bigger, larger apartment buildings that we've had in the last few years. This is a different method of growth. So this is much smaller scale and scattered around the city. And finally, this also promotes affordability. Um, when you think about one lot having one house, if you have one lot with three homes, that's spreading the cost of three homes over one lot. So that's bringing down the cost of the land and bringing down the cost of, of the eventual sale or rent price. Okay, so here's a map. I can zoom in if you guys would like. But we have in the kind of yellowish-orange color, that's RM one, the zone district that I told you we have lots of in the city. The greenish one is rural residential. And so you'll notice with this, um, it looks like there's a lot of area. Uh, but as I said before, there are not many lots that are, that have this zoning. And of this area of these lots, they're mostly on steep hillsides. So there's very little development potential here. We're not proposing allowing, um, development on steep hillsides, um, any differently than we do now. Um, it just happens that these are just kind of funky lots that are on hillsides and many of them were, uh, subdivided long ago. In the purple, we have a bit more of the RL lots, um, and you can see they're mostly kind of in North Glenwood and West Glenwood. Feel free, if you wanna come back to this at some point, I can, we can look at it some more, I can zoom in. Here's the example I showed you before of what a two hundred and fifty foot buffer looks like here in the downtown area. And so this proposal that we're talking about tonight does support some of the goals of our comprehensive plan. Some of the goals are increase housing density, provide diversity in housing types. And some of the policies and actions, the more specific things our comp plan, um, is looking for is to provide incentives for developers to build condos or townhouse units, including identifying and supporting condo minimization opportunities. Like you often see with duplexes and triplexes, to increase homeownership. Require qualified workforce and affordable housing buyers and renters under subsidized housing programs to be employed locally, like the RO deed restriction would do, within city limits or in close proximity as determined by deed restriction regulations. And to create a policy or program to preserve existing missing middle housing and explore ways to develop new missing middle housing. Um, missing middle housing typically refers to, um, duplex or multifamily housing that's in between single family homes and larger apartment blocks. There are five criteria for tax amendments to the code, which is what this is tonight. I won't read them to you unless you want me to. And we have, um, findings that we recommended in the staff report for all five of these findings. We do think that they're consistent with the comprehensive plan and sports policies, actions described in it. We do think that the proposed changes to the codes, code, uh, mitigation requirements do not conflict with the municipal code. Um, we think it demonstrates a community need because hous- housing is an important community need. And according to our strategic housing plan update that I was mentioning before, we face a shortage of approximately thirteen hundred dwelling units. We think it's necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions or policy in the city, um, because of this shortfall of thirteen hundred dwelling units. And we think it's consistent with the general purpose and intent of this code because the proposed amendment is in line with the purpose and intent of the code. So here's a recommended motion for you all. And that's all I have for you for now, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you Watkins, um, so questions from the commission?
Is this a lot for a Monday?
Uh, Commissioner Cipperly. Commissioner Cipperly.
Thanks, um, I have one, um, question regarding, well, um, basically the definition of duplex and triplex. Do these have to be attached sharing a common wall, or could they be three separate units on one lot?
They could be separate units on a lot.
Would, does there have to be like a sort of approximately equal size and, and would it? Would it be a possible thing that the city would see if there's one existing residence and somebody wants to build a duplex in the back? Is that a threeplex?
That would be, yeah. That is what we think the most likely scenario of, of how this would develop, at least in the foreseeable future, is redevelopment of existing structures as opposed to scraping and rebuilding.
Okay, and, um. I'm, I seem to remember us trying to remove the phrase like family out of our code. Is, I'm still seeing one family, two family, three family, were we gonna say dwelling units or?
Uh, we did delete, um, the definition of what a family is from our code, but sometimes depending on what we're looking at. Thinking of the fire sprinkler code we just looked at that's in building code, building code still references and uses the word family, but it doesn't denote the same sort of. Number of related people in a household. So, that is gone from code.
Okay, great, so we're sort of stuck with the terminology, and I mean, it, it's how we talk about it, so I understand that.
That's a good way to put that, yes.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Connerton?
Thanks Watkins, that was great, um, just a couple questions, so, some just for clarity. So there's about seven hundred and eight lots, um, in RM one. Is that what we, what you established? It said nine eighty-eight, but like really, those that would meet the criteria for building a duplex are only hu- seven hundred and eight. And those would just be administrative review, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and then, um, when you say for the triplex, it would be, um, one, it would be resident occupied. Can you define what that means? Like, like, you know, you're around eight months, six months?
Yes, um, so all this would be laid out specifically in the deed restriction. Um, no one has to go and invent that or, or remember it themselves. Um, it means that they would have to work a minimum of thirty-two hours per week. Um, and they would have to work, I think it's a, a minimum of nine months per year to occupy it, nine months per year. Um, and they would have to work, uh, for an employer, um, that's, that's here within city limits. There are some provisions for, if you can't find anyone who's willing to rent it within city limits, you can move outward. There's a couple, there's tiers, um, gradually moving away from city limits. Uh, but that's the, the first priority, the first preference. There are some limited exceptions, if you, um, were, are disabled and you were disabled for, I think it's two years before, living in, in, in Glenwood for two years. Um, then you can, you can live in an RO unit, um, without running afoul of the deed restriction. And there's a couple, there's also exceptions for seniors and for students.
Okay, um, that answers it. I think that's it for just right now, I had one more, but now it just blew up my brain, sorry.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Houghton?
Uh, in the packet, it said duplexes require three parking spots, should that read four? With one and a half per plus. With one and a half per plus, whatever forty percent of spot rounds up to four?
No, duplexes are just three, just one and a half per unit. The guest, the additional guest parking space kicks in with the triplexes with multifamily. So that's why triplexes require six, because that's one point five times three plus one and you round up.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Guzman.
I have some questions. One of them is really basic, and it's just maybe because I'm new to PNZ. But what's the difference between the special administrative review process and the special permit?
Special use permit?
Special use permit.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Administrative review, so this is something new. This is what we're creating tonight. That's part of our proposal here, which would be decided by the planning director, by Hannah. And then special use permits are decided by you all, always by planning and zoning commission.
So somebody could apply for a duplex or a triplex, and as long as they meet the criteria, then it's
For, under a special use permit situation?
Under the administrative review.
Oh, yes. The director would have to make a finding that they meet all the criteria, that they're not in the buffer zone. That's right.
And I also read that they also have public hearings and neighborhood notifications. Is that true?
So that
Is that in the packet?
That, that kicks in with the special use permit. So that is, you know, whenever anyone comes before you all, they've had you know, notifications in the newspaper, they posted a sign on their property, they do all these things to let the neighborhood know that a change is coming. The neighborhood has a change to consider whether they like that or not and kind of read up on the issue. And that's also the reason why we felt comfortable recommending that the special use process still be a possibility for people, even if they're within the buffer. So I mentioned before, you could have two duplexes next to each other. One's the administrative review, one's special use permit. That one with special use permit obviously goes to you all. There's a chance to appeal it if they want to do that. And so we think that that would give the neighborhood a little bit more comfortability with having that extra density.
But this special administrative review would not go before the public?
Correct.
Okay. I have another question?
Yeah.
I was wondering about the historical housing. I, I read a lot about, I did a lot of research. I was reading about the two thousand and eight citywide historical preservation plan, and I was wondering, I mean, from personal experience, I know I have a historic home. No one's ever knocked on my door and asked me if I wanted to make it a historic home. And I probably wouldn't, because then I would be limited. Is that a comment? Sorry, not a question.
No, no, no.
But how then are you going to prevent people from, especially in the RM1, tearing down historic homes and historic has lots of meanings, to build a triplex?
Yeah. Well, when they have that historic designation, they're a local landmark, then there are some pretty strong protections against that happening. When they don't have it, like you're describing, someone didn't want to do that, then they would be free to do that. They, they could do a tear down as they could right now and replace it with something else that's allowed by zoning. So that is a possibility.
Would that be against the comprehensive plan and the historical plan then to change the, like the neighborhood and the I'm trying to find the words, but basically what we think of as Glenwood historical homes that would go against that part of the comprehensive plan and the historic preservation plan?
Well, remember that our comprehensive plan is very heavy on, on housing and acknowledging the shortfall in housing that we had, even though that was adopted in twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two, something like that. Even then, we kind of realized that we needed more housing and needed to be proactive about doing it. So whether that would violate the comprehensive plan or not, I, I don't think so. I mean, reasonable people can have differences of opinion about these kinds of things and
Preserve Glenwood's character while maintaining livability and increasing the vibrance in commercial resources.
Yeah, so I, and maybe, maybe it'd be helpful to talk a little bit about the enforceability of the comp plan or the historic plan versus the code. So while the comp plan and the historic plan are guiding documents, they don't have the force of law, right? So you can't, we look for compliance with them, but they are not in and of themselves enforceable documents because they're not adopted to be thou shalt comply with them. Comp plan's a great example. There are probably fourteen different places where it conflicts with itself unnecessary goals or identified goals. So the code and underlying zoning is going to control what you can actually do. And so, for instance, if you own a single-family residence in the downtown on a conforming lot, which is in the downtown five thousand square feet, let's call it five thousand square feet, I could tear that down and rebuild it with a much larger single-family residence. And that is a use by right, that you can't use the comp plan to prevent me from doing that. Because the underlying zoning permits me to do that as a use by right. So there's kind of that nuance there on, you know, they provide guidance, but they don't provide the power of law.
But I would argue that this is encouraging people to tear down houses, to build duplexes and triplexes.
And that may be the case. I just want to clarify that, that while it may not be comfortable with the comp plan or your interpretation, I'm just, all I was speaking to was the legalities of, they have the right to do it now if they want to.
Well, I guess I only say that because in everything that you guys present, which I think is important, you talk about how it fits the comprehensive plan. And so I was just wondering if there's counterargument that it also doesn't fit in always.
Sure, sure. And to be clear, to recommend approval of this, you need to find that it is consistent with comprehensive plans. So if you think it's not, then that would be a reason to come up with different findings or to vote no.
I have one more question, and then I'll move on. I was following up on Amy's, where you said it's deed restrictive to somebody living in Glenwood and you gave all, I mean, working in Glenwood. How do you enforce that? Like, what if somebody comes here and they work for three months and they've signed a twelve-month lease? How do you, who's knocking on the door to make sure that you're still working in Glenwood?
Every year around October, November, we, we contact the owners of all the deed restricted units in the city, and we ask them to send us an affidavit of who they rented to with the signature of the renter along with the rent that they paid when it, when it's an affordable, it would be so in this case. And so that they tell us through the affidavit that they meet these criteria, and then we review all of those at the end of the year.
Yeah, I'm just going to add to that. We have two different programs, and Watkins is describing the voluntary program. We have a housing development manager that we hired within the last year. His name is Kevin. He's great. And he is our person for all things housing programs. He runs all of the city housing programs. And we actually brought those housing programs back in-house when we hired his position to do all the enforcement and compliance. And the property management companies that are involved in some of the housing projects that have inclusionary zoning housing units, and then also our voluntary housing units are required by code to do reporting on that every year. And they actually have to provide us with a lot of documentation to go along with every single unit that's in our program. So the compliance is handled by the wonderful people in front of you, once a month. That's us.
But it's, so it's monthly?
It's ongoing. It's ongoing compliance. Every time they have a new tenant, they have to qualify them through us. So every time they sign a new lease, at the end of the year, they provide us all the documentation and reports on what rent was charged, who was there, how they qualified. That's all handled in-house because we're amazing. You're welcome.
Love it.
You good? Or your questions? Okay. Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess just picking off of that, for, for sale units, how is that audit conducted or represented?
So slightly different process. The document that I think a lot of the questions you guys have, and I'm sorry that we didn't include it, but it's quite hefty in your packet, is the Housing Guidelines, which is adopted by resolution. And it outlines every single thing you need to qualify for the program, every single thing that a developer needs to do to meet the compliance, all the documents that someone purchasing one of these homes would have to submit, and all the reporting requirements that are due either annually or at time of lease or at time of purchase. So that's all encompassed within that Housing Guidelines document that really tells us how these programs are implemented. And then our housing development manager is the person who interfaces with the real estate agents, the property management companies, the individual tenants themselves, you know, potential property buyers and so on and so forth. Yeah.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Halden.
For the administrative review, is that as simple as looking at the map and seeing there's not someone in the buffer zone, and then you have a ministerial duty to approve it, or is it looking at other aspects of code compliance like any other application?
Yeah, that's a good question. We haven't gotten too far down that road of kind of what we would ask for in an application, that sort of thing. We would probably need some kind of narrative application from them, you know, telling us why they think they meet the criteria, however they're approved. You know, I showed those, those four there. And that would be on top, obviously, of, of looking at the plans to make sure they're meeting things like setbacks and height requirements and all the normal stuff that everyone has to meet.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Guzman.
I have another really basic question. Learning PNZ, so there was three different densities. You had the rural, the low and the
Medium density?
Medium density. Is that, is that, were those titles or those definitions come, camp developed because of what was already built there, or is that an indication of what you want it to look like in the future?
Those are the, the titles of the zone districts, the names of the zone districts, you could say. They have been around for a very long time. When you go back to, you know, the nineteen ninety-eight comprehensive plan and our municipal code around that time, it's, you still see the same names, I, I think. So there is a little bit of intentionality with the, the names, but you know, with any name, you have three, three words and, you know, what does low density mean to you? And it might mean something different to me. So I wouldn't put too much importance on the name itself.
Yeah, and it was the medium density that overtook a different name. What was the name before that, that it was retitled from? Wasn't it?
Yeah, in twenty eighteen, when we did a development code update, we changed the names, but not the intent or what was actually happening in those zone districts.
Yeah.
There were two zone districts that had lot standards that were just slightly bigger than one another, but had the same general makeup and intent, and that was combined.
In general, the, the zoning hasn't changed very much since nineteen fifty, in many ways. Lot standards, which are not part of what we're discussing tonight, but just as an example, lot standards for most of our zone districts are the same as they were in nineteen fifty.
But you don't think the name, the names were not developed because they wanted to keep it rural and low density and medium density?
I would say there's a little bit of intentionality there, but not too much.
I have one more question. How did you develop those buffer zones of two fifty and three fifty? Was there like a was it just randomly chosen, or did you use some sort of?
Well, one of the, one of the exercises we did when we were trying to come up with the number, first of all, the, the goal here is to limit how many they can be so that, so that it's not allowed everywhere. But we thought about where in town we have consistent block lengths, which is mostly in the downtown area. Each block is around four hundred and thirty feet. That's not the case in the rest of the city. But what would be most kind of predictable and what would be limiting in, in blocks like that would be to have one or two per block. And that's what we get when we have two hundred and fifty feet. I should say it's also kind of convenient because two hundred and fifty feet is the buffer for vacation rentals. And so we kind of know visually what that feels like and looks like. And then we made it a little bit bigger for those other more less dense zone districts, just because we know that those are bigger lots.
And why did you decide that you could have two, two of them? So one per administrative and one for special use permit. Why did you just do one or the other? To make double the number?
Well, and it wouldn't always be double the number, you know, I don't know if we've had any duplexes come in through the special review process, although they could. We thought that having the special use permit process with the neighborhood notification that comes with that would allow people to kind of let their voices be heard and let people kind of understand what that would look like. So, you know, if that, if that emerges a problem because of the design or because of the location, there'd be hearing before you all, and there'd be plenty of opportunity to kind of understand the potential impacts, which is what special use permits are all about, is understanding impacts in different situations.
I think I might add to that a little bit. Based on what I think your question is kind of getting at, what we've set for the buffer district of two fifty, which, as Watkins has mentioned, staff is very comfortable with because we implement that in other sections of our code. So we know what it plays out to on a blockface. And also, we have a fairly good idea of how many lots are on blockfaces. So spatially, we're thinking, some of the comments before, when we talk about duplexes and triplexes, are concerned that there's going to be too many. And a distance buffer, you know, not dissimilar from an actual cap, it provides space so that it's a preventative measure to ensure that an entire blockface is not going to turn into duplexes overnight. It spaces it out. It, it provides distance between this, so it's a little bit of a buffer and it's not overwhelming. And I would say, as Watkins described, staff is fairly comfortable with that and spatially aware what that looks like. And then with the special use permit for anything that's falling within that buffer, it's stating, okay, we're getting a little bit more than what this administrative review had envisioned. So let's put it up to a little bit more scrutiny. Because then it's, you know, we've got, we've already got two in the distance buffers, and this person is proposing another one. Is it actually appropriate to have all three or all four? And so then that rises to another level of scrutiny because you're getting more, and this special administrative review use is aimed at slightly limiting how much comes in, if that helps at all.
So there could be up to four per block, though, two on each side?
No, 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 no. You really need to think about it in terms of the distance buffer. And depending on where that lands in the block, it'll take out most of the block. If it's at the corner, you might be able to get another one up at this corner. And so very similar to how our vacation rentals work and that, that buffer distance of where it falls on the map, if you want to pull that back up, Watkins.
But I guess, as he pulls it up, it says that you can do one by special permit, but that buffered, but the next one doesn't have to be, could be right next door.
By special use permit only, so
It could be right next door.
If approved by this board for appropriateness.
Well, okay.
And that's the whole reason
But if it fits all of the categories, it goes up anyway, right? Even if we
You guys have
Sorry. On a special review permit, you have a lot more latitude and neighborhood compatibility is a big component of that. So that would be one of the conversations you would have there. If you had to next to each other, and it might be, I mean, like, one of the things that's interesting about this is that we, we tend to think about this in terms of, like the duplex that I lived in for a while downtown, where it's, you know, it's too clear, it's vertically separated. It's entirely possible that that duplex might be horizontally separated, and it's two units that have been in existence for a very long time that they've opted to convert into a duplex, even though currently, you know, it's being rented out as, as a home and a, maybe an ADU, maybe abandoned, you know, I mean, there's, it, it, it doesn't always look like new construction, I guess, is what I'm saying. So that plays into what you would be analyzing under a special use permit review and compatibility.
Commissioner Sipperly.
On that same note, I guess I, I'm looking for clarification. And so I will ask if, if the administrative review approves a triplex on, you know, eight twelve address, then a special use permit could come in and apply for another triplex on the eight fourteen property, and then we would wind up with two triplexes next to each other, but the public notice would only be for one?
Not triplexes. Triplexes aren't allowed, except by this administrative review process that we're proposing. Triplexes are not allowed currently in RM1 at all.
So would there be no special use permit for a triplex?
No.
Only administrative review?
That's what we're proposing.
So someone wants to build a triplex and the public gets no notification?
Right, and they would have no possibility of building, except, you know, building within that buffer area, that wouldn't be possible.
So the administrative review and special use only applied to duplexes? So then we wouldn't have a So then we wouldn't have a massive density of triplexes?
Correct.
Okay.
It'd have to be outside of those buffer areas.
But for my example, duplexes could be built on this neighbor's lot pretty easily. Just go ask Hannah, Hannah says sure. And then the next door neighbor says, I want one too. And they have to do this rigmarole, huh? Is that correct? He has a question.
Just to be clear, as the director, I have criteria that I would have to approve it by. So let's not use the terminology, I just approve it easily.
Of course, of course you have strict criteria.
Similar to the criteria, but.
But that is, that could occur to duplexes next to each other, one by administrative review, one by special use permit.
It could occur if the application came before you guys and you determined that it was appropriate for the location that they are applying to, just like any other special use permit that we have in our code.
So the objective of the property owners would just be to get in the door first, because then they would be subject to the administrative review and not required to do the special use permit because they would not have had an existing buffer, right?
That's an interesting component. As Watkins had mentioned, and I'll just reiterate, we have not had a duplex come in for a special use permit in the zones that they are currently allowed for in the entire eight and a half years that I've been with the city. So let's just provide a little context of how often that's actually happening now, which is zero. Not that it can't, but you guys have not seen in the last eight and a half years, a duplex come in for a special use permit.
But that is the goal.
That is the goal. And so, you know, that kind of mentality is, is borne out more in like a vacation rental permit scenario. So I can understand what you're saying. We, staff does not believe that's going to be a large issue, mostly because undertaking building of a duplex is rather massive. So it's not something that someone can be like, ooh, I'm going to take that from my neighbor and pull together something really quickly. Cause it is still a fairly large process to build a single family home or a duplex. It takes time and money.
As you said before, one thing that we might be hoping to encourage is a reuse of an existing single family into a duplex. And in that case, there's not as huge expense of building a whole new property. So if you've got a single family, large home on one lot and next door, you have a rather large single family home, that means they both can't turn into duplexes without one of them going through special, you, special use permit.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Connerton.
No, it's out of common.
Mike?
Our button pushes out, let me get. There you go.
Okay, so would it be fair to say that when we discussed this as a commission with the vacation rentals, that there wasn't this rush for people to kind of block the neighbor from the buffer zone?
We have seen a, I would say a gradual, but a slow increase in the number of vacation rentals we've had. The buffers do a pretty good job of keeping the, the total number down. And we kind of consistently add a few more every year, I would say, so not a rush.
Okay. I'm only saying that only because of the context of a little bit of, you know, what kind of what Commissioner Sipperly was talking about. So it's the only reason why I was bringing it up.
And I think from your questions, something to point out, Watkins also is the expiration of the administrative approval that's included in your staff report.
Yes.
So we understand and we certainly don't want someone to apply, apply for the concept, concept of a duplex or a triplex. Get the approval and hold on to it for years. So it does expire.
Right.
And we chose that expiration of 180 days. It coincides with our building permit standards. So truly you need to actually be planning on building your duplex. And that was a preventative measure that we threw in there so that we don't get kind of speculative permit holds.
That's what my point was, thank you. Wasn't a comment, wasn't a comment. Don't look at me like that.
Other questions? Sure. Commissioner Gomick.
Sorry. So could there not be adding triplexes to the special use permit instead of creating this administrative review?
That's not what we have drafted here for tonight, but that is something that could be done.
Alright.
Thank you. Other questions?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So it was stopped in May of 24 after, I guess there was a public, whatever there, there's some public meeting and then council decided to pull it at that time after we've been through.
Yeah, there was significant opposition. Significant opposition, I would say, to what the community perceived as an unlimited increase in density. So council really kind of gave us all direction as staff to come back with something that would be much more controlled in the timing and how quickly anything could transition, recognizing that what we have seen in terms of like special use permits for teardowns and duplexes, we haven't really seen any. So kind of balancing that need to try to encourage some creative housing, as well as recognize that the community only wants to see change so fast.
So, so this is the, and you know, I, I read in here that, I guess in the February meeting, council, you know, council gave direction to go forward with this, with this, but so, but, but so was, was the distances and a bunch of this stuff presented to that? I mean, was there, I guess my question is, was there a change from 2024?
Hannah, go fix it. We'd like to see a pilot program that, that allows the community to see how this could be done without putting undue pressure on the community. And so with a change legislatively last year statewide that limits our ability to put numerical caps on housing development, we had to really kind of think about creative ways to engage in what's essentially a pilot program, if you will. I mean, based on, I mean, when you think about it, based on the, the buffering, you, you kind of have a natural cap that you're going to reach at some point, just like we have kind of with short-term rentals.
Okay.
So that was kind of the goal that council laid out. And then just been trying to find ways to accomplish that in light of the, kind of the legal structure that we have to work with, where we can't just say there's only going to be 20 of these citywide, and we'll see how that plays out. We just can't do that underneath current law.
Okay. So, and I'm just going to kind of follow up on that a little bit. So, so as we go forward with when, when, you know, let's say we come out with something tonight and goes forward to council that then is, is there a separate public process or is there just one as, as typical with, with it? Or, you know, because there were so many actions before and it is, and it's a contentious somewhat thing. Is, is there a separate public process that you're proposing with council? That's like the public listening and education session that happened in April before the council meeting? Or is it just going to be at the council meeting that there'll be, you know, typical noticing?
We were directed to bring this to you all without public process for this because we're kind of building on a couple of years of, of public process.
Right, I mean, well, I mean, I understand that for us. My question is for going forward for the next year. I'm just asking what, what's the process for going forward for?
Next Thursday with council.
Okay.
They, you know, wanted to anticipate with this council that has had a lot of time and public engagement on the subject. They really kind of wanted to try to see if there was a path for a limited implementation before they exited. While they had all of that, so that the new council didn't have to start at the beginning and, and rebuild that level of knowledge.
So that's before the next council gets seated?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless they get it, which, you know.
Yeah, that was, that was kind of, that was kind of where I was going with all this thing. So it's, so it's, okay. And kind of a, a specific one, a footnote on the and on, on your matrix here or your, your spreadsheet for the, for the three family. So is the deed restricted only required for RM1? Or is it required for?
The deed restriction, deed restricted unit would only be required for the triplexes.
Right, right. But in, in, is it in RM1 only?
Yes.
So why is it not in the other?
Why is it not required for one of the duplex units?
Yeah, well, yeah, why is it not included in RM, you know, RM2 or RMH? So, so why is the, the triplex not required, the deed restricted in all? All zone districts?
You know, we were trying to kind of do this as, as minimal change to the existing code, I think. And having it align with the recommendations of the, the strategic housing plan update. So I, I think that's just kind of the, the way that it fell when we're making this change to, you know, a new change as opposed to changing everything and, and all the other existing residential districts.
I would add, it, the deed restriction is only for triplexes, which is coming from the recommendation that actually came out from you guys.
Correct.
And triplexes are only being proposed to be allowed in the RM1 district because we did not feel that triplexes are appropriate for a rural residential. Or I always get the two mixed up, RR or RL. So triplexes are only being proposed in RM1. And triplexes are also the only housing type that's being offered to have one be deed restricted. Staff also believe that applying that to a duplex would be overly prohibitive and the program wouldn't be used in the context of a duplex. So kind of all those things came together, which is why the footnote only references the deed restriction for a triplex. And the triplex then is only allowed in the RM1.
So it's not an RM2 or, I mean, I'm just looking at all the permitting.
Well, those ones already exist. So triplexes currently exist as a use by right.
Even though they're red, those are already existed. So the others was.
Yeah, the reason why they're red is because we had to create a new category for triplex.
Okay.
So it's a new name. So technically that entire row is brand new. Triplexes formerly fell into multifamily.
Okay.
Excellent questions.
Well, I mean, for me, some of it's, some of it's confusing a little bit because it's, it's all in text. You know, it's not like a typical proposal that we would get that here's the recommendation, here's the one, two, three, four, five, six findings kind of thing versus the findings being code stuff, you know? I mean, that's, so I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to go through that. So, and, and, and I know this was talked about some before is that, you know, it's, it's a very lengthy process. And I think it's worthwhile stating that as you go forward, you know, that people have to do landscaping, there's design standards. There's all that stuff that's there because it seems like, geez, you go in, you know, like people have kind of said, and, you know, I want to do this, but here it is. And now, now you're going to change the whole character of my neighborhood, which, you know, hopefully you're not, you know? Because there's, there's landscaping, there's all, all of this open space, all of the other stuff that you kind of allude to in here a little bit. But that's, is, is that going to be? Is, I mean, that's just a secondary appendix or some, I mean, I know that was not part of the, part of what we got presented here.
Yeah, so we're not proposing eliminating any of those requirements that already exist. And, and I think I'll take your suggestion that maybe we should talk about that a little bit more, all the other things that come with it, but with all of.
Yeah, I think it's important for the character and for all that kind of stuff, I think. Okay, and maybe that was a comment or a question, I don't know what it was. Yeah, exactly, that's in there.
Glad you said that out loud.
Let me see. So, and, and, and I think I understand this, but on the, on the, on the buffer zone, which people were talking about, if you could put up that, that slide again. I just kind of slow trying to understand it.
This one?
Yeah, that one. So, so within that circle and, and is it, is it's 250 for duplexes, right? And is, is it, was it 350?
So we're, we're, we're proposing it by zone district. So 250 for duplexes in RR and RL. Nope, nope, backwards, 350 in RR and RL where there are bigger lots, and then 250 in RM1.
And then there was, there was some wording in there that says if, if, if it's not all included in there, does that, I mean, does that count? So, so ones that are, that are cut up with the circle going through partial lots are the, are those exempted or those?
So we are proposing to do that the same way that we do vacation rentals right now, which is that it is not eligible if the entire lots, so all corners, the entire lot is within the buffer, it's not eligible. If even just a little corner of it is outside, then it is eligible.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have, my others are comments, but. Any other, anything else? Okay, Watkins, thank you very much. Now, if there's any, anyone from the public? Are there some, are there some people online there? Okay, good. We're not good, whatever, there's not people online. We wish they were there. Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll close public comment. Okay, so now I guess it comes back to us for a, for a motion. So, so, you know, could you put up, you, you had a recommendation there, because it really wasn't anything in the staff report. But I, you, I think when you did your presentation, you had a.
A recommended motion?
Yeah, yeah, you had a recommended, recommendation.
Do. It'll come up.
And, and I guess I'm, I'm just going to ask one other question while we're doing this. So when you ask, there's a, there's a recommendation, but findings, findings, there's a whole bunch of stuff that's in the text. So are we supposed, are we supposed to go through and pluck things out of the text? Or, or, or do we say things that if there's something we don't love that we want to take out? Or I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, how do we do that? Cause it's not like it normally is where we have 15 and we go, we don't like 13, but we like.
Right. I think this is, yeah, this is, this is, you know, you guys' exposure to the sausage making. So if there are things in that text, two ways we can handle that. If there are specific things that you want to interlineate and take out or put in, I think that's great. Or if you want to give us some general direction, like, you know, I, we want to see the buffers at 6,000 feet. You know, that kind of thing where, and then we'll figure out where that would get plugged in for the recommendation to council. We can do it both ways.
Yeah, and so there are five criteria of approval that need to be met. And so those are the findings, each, you have one finding for each criteria. And if you did agree with everything that's in the staff report, that's kind of an easy way to, to do it. That's kind of how the motion appear on the screens drafted, but we can help you craft it if you need to.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Cause I mean, and, and the only reason I'm kind of asking it is, you know, the, our typical way is we, you know, we would, you know, make a motion for, you know, going with the approval and with these findings. But now as we go through the findings, it's more of a conversation about them. And maybe it turns out what Carl said is what we end up with. And I don't know if we have to agree because one person might be strong on one area and or we might be, you know, mixed for how it is. So it, you know, it's kind of complicated, I guess is what I'm.
Yeah, and I think it, it would be great to have a sort of general, like, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down to attempting to do this or not. And then some specific recommendations behind that going up to council, I think would probably work pretty well. So I would start with the, like, is the general concept and idea something that planning commission thinks is worthwhile to pursue? And if the answer to that's no, then it's pretty easy to leave it there, right?
Well, yeah, okay.
That till we have the.
Well, I think, yeah, I think let's have the conversation. It, it's kind of.
Yeah, which I.
It's kind of organic thing.
You see some value inside of there. I mean, it's entirely possible that we could have presented and you guys are like, no.
Yeah.
Like, we just don't like leave everything the way it is and let's move on. I mean, that is one option, right? So I think that's kind of the opening question is if you want to tinker around with it, to me, that implies that there's some value in the proposal in front of you.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Connerton.
Okay, so I am going to recommend approval of the text changes to the municipal code sections 070.20 and 070.030, as described in the staff memo with the findings as written in the staff memo.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Second, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So I think let's have conversation, see how this goes.
Sounds good.
Okay, Commissioner Sipperly.
I also, like Commissioner Gaiman, have serious concerns about the character of our downtowns being changed by demolition of historic properties in order to go ahead and facilitate development of new duplexes and triplexes. I think that is one of my only concerns coming out of this. I understand the need for additional housing. I think infill housing is a way to go. I I think a little clarification as to what is a duplex and what is a residence with an ADU, because I I believe there's a little overlap in that. And I think that we might consider kind of a special category if a proposed duplex is not a demolition. If it is a building, existing building reuse, I am much more willing to just make sure it has enough parking for that extra unit requirement and be good with it. But if it is a historic building that's being completely removed and the lot is redeveloped, then I think it really merits a lot more investigation and input on our part, and also community input.
Okay. Do we want to do comments on on one thing as we kind of go through versus getting random? Might, might be good.
Taking notes.
So let, so let's kind of, let's kind of work in the realm of Carolyn here now.
Oh, go ahead.
Commissioner Gaiman.
I also have a lot of concerns about the changing of our neighborhoods. And I do think that it is against not only part of our comprehensive plan, but also her historical preservation plan that says to manage and develop in a way that retains the small town character of Glenwood Springs, and that historic preservation is a key priority. I know that it's actually not good for homeowners necessarily to get historic preservation, because then you can't tear it down when, you know, you can't make people declare historic preservation. So that's one thing. And then another part of our historic preservation says that code should allow for the flexibility necessary to preserve the scale and integrity of historic districts. And part of this, of the RM1 is historic. And I guess you would have to decide what is historic. Like, I imagine that neighborhood of Polo in Virginia and all those beautiful mid-century modern houses, to like, one of them just get torn down and all of a sudden you have a triplex there. I do think that would definitely change the character. And then also, I also found in the comprehensive plan that they did talk about infills with ADUs and what they said sensitively designed duplexes that replace specifically bungalows, which this is not what we're talking about, is specifically bungalows. So I don't even, and that's what it says in the strategic plan. And that's all I have for that topic.
Okay.
One point of clarification for your guys' conversation, the city of Glenwood Springs does not have any historic districts. They're not, they have not been created. There's lots of discussions about them, but we do not have any designated historic districts in our residential zone districts in, in downtown or other.
You know, one, one thing, and I'm kind of popping in here on Amy a little bit, but is, is it would be good, maybe Hannah or Watkins to talk about you know, what kind of design standards and that kind of thing that are required, you know, because we didn't, you didn't go into any of that. And I know there's in the GID, there's different things that are required, because I know I've done some stuff in there and I have to, you know, there's there's colors, there's fenestrations, there's all, there's a lot of architectural stuff you have to do, but then not in other places. And RM1 is a very large zone area versus some specific ones. If you could talk about that, some, that would be
Are you looking for that right now?
Yeah, yeah. I think that would, I think that would be good. I think it'd be good right now, because it, because it's part of, I think, what we're, what whomever that is.
Okay. Yeah, a primer on, on cities' design standards, okay.
I mean, I mean, it, it includes landscape, and you know, like, when someone tears something down, how do you change that? Are you changing the character of that area? And, and some of it's used by, you know, whatever kind of stuff, but
I think, yes, I think as Watkins is pulling up that section of code in his brain, I'll allow him a moment, a reprieve. We do have, it's a good point, we do have specific design standards for our downtown core neighborhoods. That's going to apply to this and what's existing specifically related to architectural features and how it's supposed to feel. So I appreciate you pointing that out, Chair Waller, because it is an additional protection that exists currently that has been decided by the community and council that does protect the character through those design criteria. And we could certainly pull them up on code and have you view that section of what is entailed. I would also point out that is something that this Planning and Zoning Commission spent quite a bit of time reworking and redoing and agreeing upon those additional design standards for the downtown core in 20, gosh, time flies, doesn't it? 2023, Sipperly. It was, it was maybe a year or two years ago, I remember bringing it, and specific design standards were added for the downtown core. I don't know if we want to bring that up on so that you guys can look at it if you, if you want to.
Yep, that'll just take a second here.
Did that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one thing, I mean, RM1 is, is, it's a large area. I mean, you, you did a good job of, I think, of pointing out the Polo Road, which is where people like me aspire. That's where I want to move to. I mean, and, 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 you know, different. Yeah, and, and well, and I most, just structurally, I know it's like a sound. One of the rare, one of the rare sound places in our town, other than maybe Park East. But it's, it's, no, but I but, but, so, so it, it, there's a GID which is down, then there I mean, you know what I mean.
Yes, there's lots of different boundaries.
What we're getting at, I guess, is the question.
And I would say the downtown core is a different boundary than the GID. It's, it's larger, it's much larger, actually.
So that would be good to kind of just kind of, and it doesn't need to be exhaustive, but just kind of help us. And maybe putting, sticking up the GID thing after you kind of go, or, or not, the, the zone thing, not the GID, the the RM1 that showed how big that is, that's a, that's a big
Yes, I think we have two things going on, and I don't know if we have. Yeah, actually, the GIS would show that.
Can.
I think you can, you can show the design standards, locations.
We can turn on the downtown core.
Core layer. So that'll help with that. But you're right, because the zone district is much larger, and then there are some very specific design standards that go with the downtown core.
Which is really, is what some people will call historic. That's a general term.
No.
Yeah, okay.
Well, there's historic homes in downtown area.
Right now, I'm showing you the downtown core, so that extends possibly farther than what you think of as downtown. But all the original townsite lots that were planted back in the 1800s, that goes up into North Glenwood here. And as Chair Waller said, there are specific design standards for that area across all zone districts, products of the zoning. So I have some ideas to kind of be brief, but also give you guys an idea of what we're talking about here. I thought maybe I'd start just by not expecting you to read this, but this is the beginning of our design standards. And if I scroll through it, I'll be scrolling for a minute. You can see that we, we don't let people just build whatever they want, Glenwood. So, you know, we start with you know, we, we tell people that you have to meet all these design standards unless you're just doing small renovations. And then we talk about you know, the setbacks and where the parking is. We have standards about where you can park and where your garage has to be accessed from, how the building's oriented. When you're doing multifamily, how you have to have a variety of kind of configurations. And here's the section where we talk about how each this is an important, when each home, each new building has to have a certain number, a minimum number of, of architectural features on each side of the building, whether it faces the road or not. Because we want good quality design here. We do regulate the kind of building materials that are here and the colors. And then another important part to note is that, that we have strict requirements about transitions. So when you do scrape something, it has to fit in with what's around it. And we do that through this section here primarily, transition to existing residential. So that's about height and also about locating, you know, the windows and, and the other kind of impactful components of buildings. This is a lot, I know. Garages, where they're located, where they're accessed from, requirements that they have sufficient amount of storage. Now we get into the specific standard about the downtown core design standards, which are just more specific, I would say. More specific about colors, roof forms, materials. Then we get into the non-residential design standards. So this is the downtown core area, where those specific standards
So where does that go from? Could you, where, I mean, what are the streets? What is that?
This is
Not Polo.
13.
So this doesn't apply to Polo?
No, no.
That's down. It only applies to
This is like
Then all of kind of north one. But all parts of the city have design standards that apply to them.
And that goes down to like about, does that go to the high school? Is that?
13.
Just north of that 13th street.
Just north of the high school, so, yeah. And then up pretty far up there and
Yep, all the way.
Yeah. Okay. So, I, I'm, okay, Commissioner Connerton.
Uh-oh. So I mean, if I owned a home in the downtown, I could scrape it if I wanted. I have a use by right. We've, we've had other people come here who have actually scraped their homes, whether it be on Bennett or Blake. And then, you know, they come in, they're asking for like a special variance, maybe, like, because the lots are all kind of skewed from, you know, 1898. And so then they have to find, you know, we have to change some lot lines, lines and stuff. But I would say that, you know, because of all the design, you know, things that are implemented in the code, we, you know, you get a really nice looking, conforming to the neighborhood, I would have to say rebuild. You know, I don't want to keep talking about historic, because that's not really there is no historic preservation thing. Like, just because I own a house from 1898 doesn't mean I am, I have to follow some sort of conforming thing and design criteria. I do like what Commissioner Sipperly said about the duplex versus the ADU. I think that is something that could be you know, maybe discuss more with the council, because it is a little fuzzy, I think, a little bit. Should I keep going?
Yeah.
The commissioner, okay. Chair. Also, I do, I appreciate the special use permit, because they come before us. We can have public neighbors come in, make comments. I think there's, you know, it's kind of a way for everyone to get more involved, especially with that notice and things like that. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of triplexes. I mean, what'd you say? There was like 16, 16 lots or something that potentially could be a triplex in RR? And then
Well, and we're, we're not going to do triplexes at all in RR. That's not what we're proposing.
Or, yeah, oh, yeah, sorry. I forget what it was. It was like rural something. But anyway. And then also, I would like to see the language change to just dwelling, like Commissioner Sipperly said, instead of three family. But anyway. And I'm sure I probably have some more comments, but I'm not saving for later, but
Okay. Commissioner Houghton.
I guess in addressing historic, are we still trying to keep our comments to that?
I think we're kind of general in there.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
I think go where you want to go.
I was just going to say, I think by definition, the comprehensive plan has competing interests, and it's our we are charged with assigning weights to those competing interests. And in my mind, the need for housing and, and keeping community characters and people that live here, the literal characters of our community. I think that outweighs historic preservation in this case, when we're talking about duplexes and triplexes. Those are my thoughts on historic.
Okay. Other comments? Another, let's let, let's go beyond Well, no, no, I think it's fine. I think it's fine. Yes, Commissioner Houghton.
I guess triplexes in, in the proposed scheme, I don't foresee really any triplexes being built. I think six parking spots is a lot. That's like 2,500 square feet almost, dedicated just to parking, based on our engineering design standards. They would have to meet the commercial building code, which is a barrier to entry, unless they're side by side, they're townhouses, I guess. I think the RO, deed restriction is just sort of the straw that breaks the camel's back. I just don't think it, it pencils out for a developer to build a triplex. Potentially a conversion of a, something that wasn't triplex into a triplex might make more sense. But you still have to tackle six parking spots. I, I guess I would recommend we look at maybe changing that required parking, because like, six spots being 2,500 square feet, and you're talking I guess at a minimum, it's a 7,500 square foot lot. So that's a third of your lot is parking, another 20% is landscaping, and then you have to put in common space. So over half the lot is dedicated to not building footprint. If you have steep slopes, easements, riparian setbacks, any of that. I mean, I, I just don't see triplexes, any triplex development coming from this, even if it is a lower barrier to entry than it was.
Okay, Commissioner Sipperly.
On that note, I do recall that during so many of our public hearings, that the parking is the major issue. So many neighbors say, oh, well, this is a great design. I mean, the place isn't even that bad, but the parking here is already so awful. And personally, I feel that our code in single and duplex under requires parking. And I think this might be a gesture towards the neighborhood to say, hey, we're gonna, if we're gonna allow a triplex, we're at least trying to mitigate the parking issue. So I, it is a lot of parking. Perhaps there can be a way to require that some of that is covered or inside, so we're not just seeing a sea of of parking. But I know that tends to increase developers' costs as well. And I, the, the way that the community has reacted over these numerous public outreach events, I'm actually a little concerned right now that we have not public noticed this meeting and given them the chance to talk here. I would be sort of in favor of keeping a special use permit for triplexes just to encourage civic interaction. And can I jump back on the HPC stuff for a second?
Sure.
Perhaps if they were to keep an existing building and make it into a duplex, then they could earn the right to have an additional dwelling unit on their property as an incentive. And I know this ties in with the Preservation Commission and probably won't go anywhere tonight, but I think preservation needs to be incentivized, and that really is part of what defines our community character. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Gaiman.
I'm going to follow on the heels of Commissioners
Sipperly.
Sipperly. And I do feel uncomfortable with the public not being involved, especially if we're going to take it to city council and also the public not involved. I know we have a great many in our community who want to keep Glenwood Glenwood. And I do feel the pressure of housing. I mean, I work at the hospital, so I can see both sides. But having the ability to not have a hand at all in some duplexes and triplexes with also special permit uses right next door, it, it's too, it's too much. I think it's too much. And I don't think the citizens of Glenwood is going to be in for that either.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll kind of weigh in on historic. I mean, my, my take is you know, it's, it's tough. I mean, you know, you're, you're, do the historic preservation, so that, that's, I have an 1890s house, and it's like, that's a that's historic, but then you go to Polo, you go to, you know, wherever you go, you could call it historic. I think it gets, it's very woolly. It's, it's not very clear of what that is. And so I'm kind of more into the to the design standards and, and, you know, pushing that sort of thing. I mean, that, because otherwise, I mean, for, for my property, I'm, I'm kind of struggling between you know, the Pink Palace, do I, do I make it be a, a historic thing? But do I change my windows? You know, the Pink Palace, do it, do I make it be a, a historic thing, but do I change my windows now before I do it? Because other than I have to have, you know, windows that aren't efficient and we have to, you know, whatever all these things are, so it's um. And as a result, there's not many historic properties here, you know, as we saw when we saw the presentation in town, so it. I, I, I kind of struggle with that. I guess the, for me, the, the parking. Um, I think the numbers you're going with parking, that's per code, right? I mean, that's, that's our code numbers. So I, I'm, and I'm, so I'm kind of okay with the parking and, and, and I, I think that then they need to come in with a variance, you know, then. Someone's coming in like they would typically, I'm assuming that they would come to planning and zoning and go, hey, I'm. Here's why I think I can get by with four or whatever that number is because I have a huge amount of parking in the front, or I have something. You know, different that I can go with that, so. So I'm kind of. Well, if, if they, they have to come to us unless they have six. I mean, if, if they want to come less, less than six, they have to, it's a variance.
What Chair Waller is referencing is if you don't meet the code requirements for parking. You do have to come before Planning and Zoning Commission to receive a variance from that code.
Even under the trigger review process?
Yes, it does not eliminate those at all.
Right.
You still have to meet every other aspect of code.
Right. And um, and then I, I, I guess I'll kind of echo. What I'm hearing some people saying, I, I think this is a, you know, it, it's, it's a um touchy subject with our community. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little fearful of pushing it through quick, you know, to just kind of push it through. I think that. Seems like that's asking for uh. For some complications in the, in the community. I mean, that, so I, I don't know how that. How that plays out, but that was kind of my question of how do you, the public noticing go and, and I, I know, I understand all the work. Huge amount of work's been done and a lot of public outreach, which was done twenty twenty-three, the surveys and. You know, we were kind of part of all of that stuff. But, you know, people's memories are short, including, you know, mine, maybe because I'm old, I don't know. But, but it's, it's um, you tend to forget, here's stuff that's been talked about, so playing through. I also think the whole story, which is on the code, which is on landscaping, which is on all of these things. So people understand it's not, it's not just one item, so um. Anyway, those are kind of some of my comments. Commissioner Connerton.
So just a couple of comments, so as, because we're a recommending body, so we can. You know, make recommendations to these code changes to um what we think. You know, to city council. Um, I mean, obviously Hannah and um Mr. Hanlon. You got a mister, uh, you, you guys would bring our comments to the city council, right? And then also I do, everybody keeps talking about the administrative review and I just wanna mention that. Um, I've never seen anything rubber stamped. Um, I, I think that if um staff has a question or a concern. They will bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then um, you know, have us look at it. As opposed to, you know, I've never seen a, like a rubber stamp like boom, 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 like there's gonna be, you know, duplexes all over the place. So um, that's one thing that I do appreciate. They also have a lot of criteria that they have to follow. And even if all that criteria is met and they do have the ability to basically say, um, you know, I can. Uh, rubber stamp it. They don't all the time. Staff does send it back to us to kind of review it, so. I guess those are more comments.
Okay, Commissioner Houghton.
I just wanted to bring up some other stuff. Uh, fifty, only fifty-two percent of our. Community, I believe, based on the last American Community Survey, is owner occupied housing. That would mean forty-eight percent is either vacant or rent or occupied housing. I think it's important to keep that in mind when we're talking about this. We're not only responsible for the, the homeowners or property owners of Glenwood, right? Everyone that lives in Glenwood. I. We need to treat everyone in Glenwood, or consider everyone in Glenwood, not just property owners or homeowners. Um. And the other thing I wanted to point out, which I think the twenty twenty-four survey, wait, there was the survey in twenty twenty-four?
That's right. Uh, no, uh, twenty twenty-three.
The twenty twenty-three survey, which had the largest participation of any of the public events or public.
At least one of them, yes.
Uh. Had, I believe, majority support for triplexes uh with uh, an even broader proposal. Is that fair to say?
Um. Duplexes certainly, triplexes was a little bit mixed.
I just think it's important to think about who can come to meetings and who can't come to meetings. I, I. Unfortunately, I think there's a tendency for the loudest voice in the room to, to win out.
Are you thinking? Um. Other comments or questions? These are questions and then. They can be whatever you want. Commissioner Guzman.
Well, and. I don't remember what the results of the um special election was on the keep Glenwood Glenwood, but it was pretty significantly high. That people wanted to keep the character of the community, um, which I think also speaks really aloud. The other thing that we've been talking a lot about is um tearing down houses. And I do, um, I don't have a lot of information because I'm not a specialist. But I do know that older homes are built with much greener um. Products, wood, um. And tearing down a building to rebuild another building is not environmentally friendly necessarily. Um, it contributes a lot to our landfill and I do think we have to keep that um. In mind as well, you know, and I know we can't prevent people from tearing down their houses. I agree. I mean, I purposely don't make my house. Historic house for that reason, but um, I think having both the special use permit. And the administrative review is too much, and I would side more with just keeping um. The special use permit and not the administrative review. I think that removes a lot from the community and their choices.
Okay, thank you. Um. Other comments? Commissioner Keller.
Thank you. Well, I, I just, thank you for the memo. Uh, it's really well done. Uh, you know, I think, I don't think there's. I don't think anyone's gonna convince anyone of anything in this community on this issue right now. I don't think anyone's gonna. Win hearts and minds and sway people over to the other side, um. It, it's been litigated, it's captured in this, it's kind of how much it's been gone over. I think what staff arrived at is a very. I guess, you know, they're, they're the commonsensians, I guess I'll say, that's probably not a word, but um. They arrived at something I think is very workable, addresses as many concerns as they could, um. By still getting to really kind of the nub of the issue, um, which thank you for. Uh, identifying the missing middle, um, which as I view is really an existential issue for our community. Um, so if you talk about keeping Glenwood Glenwood, whatever kind of buzzword. You may like to use there um or attach meaning to, um, that's really kind of the heart and soul, I think of. Of what we're trying to um attract and preserve and, and keep in our community. And that's who will help define our community moving forward. So I think this proposal by staff does a great job. Of, I think, creating opportunity and space for these concerns to. Um, be brought into the decision-making process on a case-by-case basis. While also trusting the expertise of our staff to do the right thing by a fairly comprehensive code. And uh handrail documents through the comprehensive plan uh to help them do that, so I, I like it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let me try something out here, see if this um. You know, where I, you know, we're not gonna all agree with, with everything we have here. I mean, that's how it is, and, and I, I guess a question I would have would be. Maybe if, I mean, I, I've kind of been writing down what I think are some of the contentious items that we have, and I don't know if you've. Assuming you've been doing the same thing, I'm pointing at whomever over there on that side, but, but, but it, it might be good if you could. Maybe play back which, what you've heard from us is, uh, you know, and. Because I, I don't think it makes sense for us to go through and vote on each of these things. You know, the historic housing, the duplex, the special use first, but, but I think it would be good to. To hear from us as a group that, that, and you know, I think these are serious, I, these are important items and we're. Different places where we are, but I just want to make sure that what we're putting forth as our findings, you know, there is the, there is the recommendation, but then. The findings is kind of the amorphous kind of conversation we've been having here. So I don't know if that makes sense, but uh, I mean, I could list the ones I have or if you want to kind of say what you've.
I have a quick question.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner.
So on, with the motion, right, there's two, there was a suggestive motion, alternative motion. And then also the five criteria. Is that where you're going?
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not on the criteria. I mean, to me, the criteria are like a generic.
Yeah.
Thing.
Okay, good.
They're, they're, they're not, they're not.
Okay, good.
We haven't been talking about any of the criteria other than, you know, what does the comp plan mean? I mean, that, that's a woolly thing as well.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, okay.
But I think it's more on the, on, I think the. I mean, I'll, I'll kind of try this out and, and I think there's, and people can throw in on, on other things, but I. You know, one is, is the historic. You know, properties, that, that, that's, that's a deal and, and um. Um, you know, historic is what does that actually mean? You know, does, is it the, the downtown district or, you know, how, what, what is historic?
Anything over fifty.
Anything over fifty? Like my car, like I have, you can't, you can't get rid of my car. Um, but anyway. I think that, you know, that, that. I mean, people, okay.
Like, but uh.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying that, that, that there's a concern with, with losing. And whether you call it make, keep Glenwood Glenwood, whatever it is and whatever.
Yeah, let me see if I can help interpret for everybody just a little bit. I think what you guys have identified is that you want to spend some work session time. Considering whether or not to impose historic districts throughout the town that addresses um, and you'll establish. Periods of significance for the city, and then you will apply a greater level of scrutiny to those individual areas. Um, that's really what I'm hearing is what you're asking for. Because you don't have any teeth in the code right now to say, well, I don't like it and buildings over fifty. Frankly, I don't know if that's a, 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 a time period of significance or not to Glenwood's history, if fifty years is the right number or not. Um, it might be thirty years, it might be a hundred and fifty years, but I think you need to establish those. You don't have those now.
Right.
So kind of what I'm hearing is that before you wanted to take a look at other regulations, for those of you that were supportive of that. You'd want to sit down and create a complete historic overlay with additional levels of scrutiny and limitations on what property owners could do with their properties. Did I get that right?
Jock. You might have to repeat.
I think the last, I think the last, the last statement you, I think the last statement you said for, uh, uh, that's, that's a. To say, here's what they can or can't do, and I, I guess I would say it a different way would be, you know, what, what, what is historic? And maybe, maybe it's kind of like in the comp plan, it's like a guideline of here's kind of how we view these areas. And then it's consistent with, with design guidelines that, that planning has.
And, and I think the reason I was.
Played together.
Just being is that, so I think there's a spectrum going on there on this. For Carolyn, it is absolutely, she wants to control what people can do with what. Would be in what she believes is a, the, the time periods of significance. By way of example, it is extraordinarily difficult to do anything with your house in Aspen. In Crested Beet, you have to remove the, the roofing material that is on it, and you have to replace the same roofing material back on your house when you do structural upgrades. You can't use anything new. If you can't find something from that time period, you have to get, you know, if you destroyed yours, you have to go find something from that time period and replace it.
I don't want to be.
That's, that's kind of what, I mean, when you get into that historic, like you've got to recognize there are levels of that. That. That go into that, and so I guess what I'm saying is, what I heard, at least from Carolyn, was that she would like to explore doing that. So that the code had some teeth to prevent people from altering historic structures. Right? Did I get that right?
Per- perhaps we are due for a joint session with the.
Um, Commissioner Sipperly.
Perhaps the Planning and Zoning Commission Indoor Housing should have a joint session with the Historic Preservation Commission.
But, but I think I accurately summarized what you were looking for.
I want to curtail the rampant demolition of older homes so that duplexes and triplexes can be built, yeah.
Okay, um, and that's, that's one person's, I mean, I've, uh, Commissioner Guzman.
I don't personally, I don't, I don't have that strong a feeling. I think there's definitely a spectrum. But I do think these proposals with administrative view and the special use permit. Overly encourages people to want to tear down their houses and build um duplexes and triplexes. And um. Come in and buy houses to buy specifically to, to tear them down, to, to make duplexes and triplexes. I do think that you should have the, the right to do what you want with your property, but I think having both, I mean, having a duplex, next or triplex. Significantly changes our neighborhoods.
Could we incentivize, like if there was an existing building being turned into a duplex, not a whole lot of changes to the outside? Maybe that one could get administrative review, but if there was a new duplex or triplex proposed, then that one would have to be a special use. It might help offset the ease of which demolition occurs.
And, and, and how much demolition has occurred in the last eight and a half years?
I don't have those exact numbers in front of me, but we don't often see demolition teardowns. There, there's. I'm thinking about how many duplexes we've had built, which is incredibly low. How many single families we've had built, which is also incredibly low. So you take those incredibly low numbers and then. Reduce that down further for the ones that had demolitions. So we've had, we've seen a couple over the last five years.
Yeah.
But I can't provide you the exact number without going into the system and looking. And I think Chair Waller, you were wanting to kind of get a summary, and this might be helpful to you guys to hear all of the concerns. Because what I'm hearing is a lot of the same concerns being iterated in different ways. Um, so I hear concern over teardowns, teardowns and historic properties. Concerned that it is too limiting for triplex and won't result in actual units built. Concern over public involvement being removed without a special use permit process. Concern over having an administrative special review use and the special use permit possibly being too much. Clarification needed on ADUs and duplex definitions to see where they overlap.
Um.
Anything to add? Um. Um, concerns over community character, which ties into all of these things here. Um, would it be helpful to talk about the distinction between uh duplexes and ADUs? Because we could talk about that now. Or is that? Not necessary.
I think, no, I, I don't think that's necessary. I think one, one, one other thing that I would throw out that I kind of heard is that um. Uh, making sure that, that public feedback is. Is, is gotten and, and, you know, and I don't know if it's just public notice. To me, that seems like not enough. To do just public notice at the, you know, next Thursday at the. Um. I think that was from, that was from several people. And maybe that's not everybody, but I think that was a, there was multiples of us that that was a concern that we're pushing it through too quick and. All of a sudden, you know, the. It's gonna be an uproar. Kind of thing. Um. Other than that, I think that, I think you guys okay with what Hannah went through? On items. Hmm, I don't think continuing is gonna. You know, I mean, it, 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 it needs to go to council, right? I mean, what, what, what are you thinking? Um, why don't you, Commissioner Sipperly?
If we were to continue, we could public notice our next meeting.
I, I mean, to be fair, this was publicly noticed. I mean, other than going door to door, you're not gonna get any more notice than what we did.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, but, because whenever we sit in here, it's all public notice, it's all being recorded.
Well, just for clarification, a code amendment, a text amendment, every time staff brings you a code amendment. We have specific criteria for public notice that we must meet, and we do. So yes, this has been noticed. To your point, Chair Waller, there are differing opinions on whether that public notice is adequate for the type of public involvement that you're seeking.
Well, and I guess the, the reason that I say that is when I look at the, you know, all of the things that we did, the fifteen. things that you did before, and then, you know, I guess you just don't want to try to squeeze this in. I don't know. I don't know if that makes sense, what I'm saying, but
I think it does. I think it's that balancing act between council thinking about, you know, trying to take what they've heard with all of that public input and trying to move it forward.
Correct.
Or starting that whole process over again.
Right, yeah, because there's all, there is a whole bunch of stuff that you did, which is, which is great work. So Commissioner Sip, okay, Commissioner Callen.
Yeah, and to clarify that list, each and every one of those was publicly noticed, correct?
Yes.
So the public had an opportunity to participate in those discussions?
We mailed flyers to two thousand homes.
It's for all of this.
I got one.
Exactly.
Okay, so we arrive at this today with all that community engagement and feedback, whether they showed up or not in place and represented here?
That's right.
In this decision?
This is definitely noted on previous process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So I I'm I'm wondering, do we need to call for a vote on this that that we, okay, Carl's nodding his head.
You have a motion and a second on the table.
And we have a second, and then, okay, and then, and then what we have is what is what Hannah read is our findings, adding on the 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 and 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 public noticing, to me, that's the, that that's different than than what I'm thinking. I get, and I guess, and I guess what I'm thinking is because of in May of, in April twenty ninth of twenty twenty four, something caused council to stop. So they stopped then, and then, and then they reconvened and said, okay, now let's move this forward. So now, as you move it forward, it seems like there's a, there's a skip in that public listening and education session. I mean, I don't even know what that was or whatever, but I don't know if there's something like that again. Anyway, that that's not a from us to decide, I think, but let me, does that are you good with that, adding that on there, Hannah?
As a
As a fi, as a finding? That that well, whatever we're calling these things. So we had, we have the recommendation, and then we have these findings or conditions that were
Yeah. I guess I think of them as kind of conditions and recommendations.
Yeah, you good with that? Okay. We, she just read. And then, and then we added the that public engagement. I don't, it's not, I don't, I don't know, whatever it's called, something.
Should I amend my motion?
Only if you want to. Commissioner Guyman.
I'd like to add that I know that the comprehensive plan and the historic plan is also, is very soft, right? Like it can be interpreted different ways. But I do think that equally that we are trying to provide more housing. I think we do have to balance that with the portions of the comprehensive plan that says that we need to retain the 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 character, you know, and specifically infill with ADUs and sensitively designed duplexes that replace bungalows, and that's it just doesn't feel like it's a hundred percent supported by the comprehensive plan. I think you could make a motion to deny it, and it would also be supported by the comprehensive plan.
Commissioner Connerton.
I was going to amend my motion. So I, I mean, I am going to amend my motion. I recommend approval of the text changes to the municipal code section zero seven zero point two zero two zero and zero seven zero point zero three zero as described in the staff memo with the following changes. Or can I just say with the following recommendations and findings that you have written down?
They weren't recommendation, recommendation.
No, they're they're
Okay, yeah, so I don't need to
Let's not get hung up on those words.
Okay, all right.
But they're, they're, they're what's going forward.
Okay.
I guess I would just ask for clarification in in your amendment. Is there anything of the proposed code text that you're changing?
No.
You're just identifying.
Yeah, I just want, I want to make sure that that's on record, that I'm identifying those findings.
Right.
Okay.
Commissioner Sipperly, were you?
No.
You need?
No. No. No, I do not intend to second that.
Can someone else?
What do you have? Okay. Okay. No, we're just looking for a second on her on her. Okay, Commissioner Callen. Second. Okay, so we have an amended motion and a second to that.
What was the amendment? I just wanted to put the findings on record.
What she did was she just added in the findings slash concerns that that Hannah went through and talked about, and then we amended. We added the
Which included
The public thing. Let's don't go through them.
Okay.
You may need to call for the question and then
Yeah.
I mean, motion is
Okay. Let's call for the question.
Can we start voting?
The motion passes four two with Guyman and Sipperly against.
Do you have a last minute comment?
Are you okay? Okay, the motion passed or the rec, the recommendation passed, so yeah, I think, you know, thank you, and I, you know, it I think this would be a reflection of the community, too. So okay.
Let's see where we
Thank you, Watkins.
Yep, and we will transmit those concerns and questions to council.
Okay. Okay, now Commissioner comments. We'll start then. Commissioner Connerton.
I, yeah, I mean, it is going to probably reflect what the community feels. I mean, we are just a recommending body, and I think we had a really great discussion tonight, and I really appreciate it. I know we are all just, you know, we're not a, we're not looking at historic preservation and things like that. The comprehensive plan is our guiding. I would have to say our guiding principles. It's not like, you know, what is written in law and or what's written in code. But I, you know, I do appreciate how we all can like say what we need to say, and it's, it usually comes out in the wash. You know, we'll see what city council does with this, and then, you know, we'll go from there. I mean, hopefully, next time we'll have more people sitting in front of us, giving us their opinions. That'd be great. So, but thanks. You guys are awesome. And thank you, Watkins, as always.
Commissioner Guyman.
I do respect the challenge that Glenwood has between keeping our community what people like to visit, why a lot of us moved here for, and balancing housing for our community members. Often, I feel like we're housing up valley, you know? And then you visit some of these towns that it's so highly dense packed downtown that you can't even park your car in front of your house. So I do think as, also, as some of us watched at two o'clock in the morning, the city council meeting where we still can't even get another grocery store in our town, I do think there's a lot of balance here. But I do appreciate the conversations that we had and all of the work that the city management put into this.
Thank you. Commissioner Sipperly.
I concur that this seems to bring together a lot of work put in by staff and, you know, and the community as a whole. I just felt a little bit apprehensive pushing it through without crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, and it is only recommendations of council. We'll do what they will, and hopefully they do heed our concerns. And yes, I, you can't understate the value of additional housing and infill housing is something we've all identified as something we want, so I'm hoping this is a step in the right direction, and thanks for all your hard work on it. Everybody here, too.
Thanks, Carol. Commissioner House.
Well, yeah, I want to say thank you to staff. I know it's been a long road, and we're not at the end of it yet. I just think as soon as we try to freeze our community in place, we lose what our community is. I I think we can look up Valley and see the canary in the coalmine on that. And I don't know what the answer is. I don't think anyone knows. People can say they know what the answer is. No one truly has the magic bullet to this. So I I appreciate the discussion, and I guess we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Commissioner Callen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you're right, this probably is a pretty good sample size of the community sentiment right now, and I thank you, everybody, for for your commentary and just kind of dedication to to being up here. It's a good thing to see and be a part of, and and thank you, staff, for not punting on this. You know, you had a number of opportunities to off-ramp this issue, I think, but you stayed on course and kind of, and and only only made it better along the way. So thank you for sticking to it. I think you know, if anyone watched the issues and answers forum, and we have someone who's going to be stepping forward on the next council who was motivated to step forward for the first time, I believe, for community or public service on this issue. So it it is out there. It's it's something that gets people's pulses activated and engaged, and and this, tonight's discussion is an example of that. So thank you for it. Appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, and and I'd also like to thank everyone's input. I think it was good discussion, and and I'm I'm kind of hoping that if 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 we were really trying to pass it, I think it maybe would have been continued, there might have been a lot more deeper discussion or that sort of thing. But I think it, I think it was very good, and I appreciate it. So thank you very much, and thank you very much, Watkins, and thank you for your input, Carl. Okay. Director comments.
Still fully staffed?
Yay.
Yay. Go live on our new permitting process is going well, so we're in week three at the beginning of week three. There's been things that we've tweaked along the way because we've learned from people coming in and using it, but overall, I think we're fairly happy and staff is learning the the process quite quickly, so we're seeing the benefits of that, but also hearing from the community that not everyone wants to create a new account with a new password.
With the new password.
So is somewhat of our life in these modern times. You need to remember fifty different passwords. So that's going well. We do have one application for your regularly scheduled March meeting, which I'm trying to recall the name. Canyon Vista. This is going to be a residential project, so a large project for you to review in March. So if you are unable to attend that meeting, please do let me know so I can let our alternates be aware.
What, twenty fifth? Yes. This month is the same as last month.
I guess that's it. Are you done? Hannah, you have anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Watkins. Very German.